Fourteenth year of our Lord, 2024, 6:02 PM. Item two invocation will be given by Pastor Aubrey Jones of Chapel Hill Baptist Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance and Texas Pledge by Councilmember Vasquez. Pastor, anyone wishing to join us for a moment of prayer can do so voluntarily by standing up.
Pastor, this is your church. You have the floor.
Thank you. Let's take a minute and pray. Father, I come to you, I thank you for today. I thank you for these men and women, the service they provide. And I just ask that you give them wisdom, that you give them leadership, that they would seek to, that they'd seek to serve with, with a heart that honors you and a heart that does the best for, for all the citizens of Odessa. Lord, help us as a community come together. Help us to focus, focus on the things that bring us together instead of the things that tear us apart. May we honor you in all, all of this. We ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledges.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, our pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. You know, it's a little crowded. Don't say it may be over capacity on our occupancy. Renee? This is, uh, Chamber of Commerce Renee Earls.
Yeah?
All right. You've got the floor. And, uh, that's your person.
Perfect.
That's what we're giving either?
Um, let's see. I think this is to each of the schools. Yes, yes, yes. Thank you.
Tell me who's getting what.
All right.
Good evening. Every year, at this time, we honor the Texas Scholar students who have given the most hours for their schools. Many of the students and possibly their parents have never been to a city council meeting, so it's also a wonderful way for them to see how government works. So, for those of you not aware of Texas Scholars, it is conducted by the Odessa Chamber of Commerce. We've done this since 1997. This year alone, students ninth, 10th, 11th, and 12th, we had 674 students meet the requirements for the hours that they needed to serve. As a freshman, they have to serve five hours; as a sophomore, 10 hours; as a junior, 15; and as a senior, they have to have 50 hours by the time graduation comes along for them to have their gold cord. Tonight, you will see that there are many students who do far beyond that. This year alone, we had students volunteer more than 22,000 hours, which is incredible. Yes. Since we started in 1997, we've had students volunteer more than 365,000 hours, many of them at nonprofits throughout our community, probably through the city, through your events that you host. So, as I call your names, we'll have the students come up. We have four, four or five students from each school, and we have a proclamation for each of the schools. But just an opportunity for you to shake hands with our mayor and to show our, for us to show our gratitude towards you, and of course, for parents to be very proud of their student. Once we've called everyone up and we've finished, we'll go downstairs and take a group photo. We have, we're starting with New Tech Odessa. Our ninth grader Carson Thayer volunteered 26 hours. So Carson, come on up. You can just come up as I call you. And I know also, you know, school is ending in a week or so, so some of the kids have different activities and aren't able to be with us, so, but we still want to recognize them. Our 10th grader Frances Leonico volunteered 264 hours. Frances may still be out there volunteering. Mary Rivera volunteered 262 hours, and this is this year alone. It's amazing. Also 12th grade from New Tech Odessa, Matthew Aranivas volunteered 130 hours. Yay. Thank you, Matthew. Come on up. And then our student who received the senior award, and what that is, is their cumulative hours for nine, 10, 11, and 12, is Kubra Kochak, 281 hours for the total of four years. Congratulations to the students from New Tech Odessa. Nope, yep, that's good. Very nice. Congratulations, students. From Odessa Collegiate Academy, 9th grade Angela Ramirez volunteered 76 hours. Our 10th grade student Emma Helms volunteered 159 hours. Our 11th grade student Daniel Oibangi volunteered 126 hours. Did I even get close on your last name? Close? Okay, good. Our 12th grader Kevin Lorenzo volunteered 494 hours this year. Kevin actually also volunteered the most hours this year of every ECISD student. He volunteered all of those hours this year, so congratulations to Kevin. Thank you, students. Our students from OC Techs, our 9th grade students, Moinalugiu Omatoye. Yes. I know. Thank you. I know I didn't get close on yours, so tell us how we pronounce it. It's beautiful, yes. She volunteered seven hours. Also from 10th grade, Madasal Chavez volunteered 20 hours. 11th grader Abraham Aguilar volunteered 108 hours. Our 11th, our 12th grader Kevin Camacho volunteered 54 hours. Absolutely, yes you should. And we, is, we have one more student. The senior award went to Dawn Sullivan, who volunteered 57 hours. If Dawn is here. And the teachers and the counselors really do put a lot of time and effort in helping these students find places to volunteer, putting their hours all together, making sure the hours are correct, and that they're getting the recognition. Many of the schools have had their events or will have their events to recognize the Texas Scholars, but we wanted to make sure that, that the students who had the most hours were recognized tonight. Odessa High School, 9th grade Andrew Brem, who volunteered 21 hours. He's a Bronco like you. 10th grade Sharkteria Gangaretti volunteered 83 hours. 11th grade Sayya Patel volunteered 155 hours. And Dalja Velasquez volunteered 149 hours this year, as well as 416 hours her four years of high school. Is Dalja with us? Congratulations, Odessa High School. Our Permian High School students, 9th grade Jonathan Wade volunteered 86 hours. Our 10th grade student Kalen Adams volunteered 317 hours. 11th grade Victoria Persley volunteered 78 hours. And our senior Satna Yedala volunteered 222 hours this year with a cumulative number of 320 hours. So you can imagine volunteering all this time and doing school, schoolwork, and then some of them work. Yes. So two more schools. STEM Academy from 9th grade Dayana Fiero, 65 hours. 10th grade William Hallford, 31 hours. 11th grade Macy Jo Baker volunteered 31 hours. And 12th, 12th grade, a senior Abigail Paredes, 50 hours. All right, STEM Academy, 100% here tonight. Wonderful. Congratulations. So those are our ECISD schools. And then we have Compass Academy Charter School. We have 9th grade Carter Chance, who volunteered 160 hours. Our 10th grade student Erin Daniels, who volunteered 54 hours. 11th grade Craig Chance, I bet related to Carter Chance, volunteered 160 hours. And our seniors, we had two who tied, not only for this year, but cumulatively, Brayden Byer and Hadley Howell, both volunteered 170 hours. Wonderful. Again, congratulations to the students. Remarkable that they are giving of their time for these nonprofits, and we also have proclamations that our mayor can read for the schools.
City of Odessa would like proclaim, whereas the Texas Scholar Program is designed to encourage students to pursue a higher level of course of study to be qualified when entering the workforce, whereas Ectric County Independent School District participates in this workforce development program, which helps students understand the good, well-paying jobs are awarded to those who have prepared themselves by obtaining a sound academic education. Whereas students in the program volunteer for local nonprofit, religious, and charitable organizations, and whereas volunteering develops teamwork, communication skills, builds network opportunities, and provides a sense of achievement. And whereas the Odessa Chamber of Commerce, ECIS, business and organizations sponsor Texas Scholars for our leaders of tomorrow, and whereas this academic year, 655 students were enrolled in Texas Scholars and completed 22,646 voluntary hours. Since the inception of the program in 1997, there has been 365,964, uh, yeah, 365,964 volunteer hours contributed to the community. Now therefore, I Javier Hoven, by the virtue of authority vested in me, as the mayor of this wonderful city of Odessa, Texas, do hereby proclaim that May 14, 2024, as Texas Scholars. Let's give these kids a round of applause. Now, if you're, parents and Texas Scholars, if you wish to go ahead and leave or stay for the rest of the city council, we have a big agenda. We are a sure cure for insomnia, so you're more than welcome to stay. And if not, you are more than happy to be excused.
Oh, boy.
Tell me how you're feeling.
I'm gonna go to sleep. It's about to get cooler. Excuse me. I do, I do. I do that when I get home, too.
It's gonna take the elevators a while.
Yep.
Yeah. So, um, we're gonna move into our next proclamation, so I'm gonna start by saying, this is Building Safety Month is an international campaign that takes place in the month of May to raise awareness about building safety. This campaign reinforces the need for adopting for modern and regularly updated building codes and helps individual, family, and businesses understand what it takes to create safe buildings and sustainable structures. So this year, we decided to start in going to our schools. We, we were lucky enough to be able to go to Hayes Elementary and actually talk to the third graders and talk, we partnered up with the fire department and police department in order to kind of explain to them what it takes to actually design a building and how we have to comply with different codes. So now I'll let you.
City of Odessa proclamation, whereas our state is committed, let me make sure I'm reading the right one, our state is committed to recognizing that our growth and strength depends on safety, essential role, our homes, buildings, and infrastructure play both in everyday life and when disasters strike. And whereas our confidence in the resilience of these buildings that make up our community is achieved through devotion, vigilant guardians building safety, and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals, laborers, plumbers, and others in the construction industry who work year-round to ensure safe construction of buildings. And whereas these guardians are dedicated members of the International Code Council, a nonprofit with members who are experts in the built, in the built environment to implement the highest quality codes to protect in the buildings where we live, work, and play. Whereas the mission, possible, the theme that encourages us all to raise awareness about building safety on a personal, local, and global scale, and whereas each year, people in the industry make a commitment to improve building safety resilience and economic investment in our community. Now therefore, I Javier Hoven, by the virtue of authority vested in me, the mayor of the safest city in Odessa, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of May of 2024 is Building Safety Month. Let's give a round of applause for this program. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you. Motorcycle safety awareness. We have representatives of the, motorcycle safety awareness. Come on up, guys. So, we are in May. We, we do this annually. We're gonna be, so, have you, what do we have in this weekend? Come on over.
Do you wanna go ahead and talk about yourself? Would love to introduce yourself.
Hello, everybody. My name is Johnny Keats, and this is my good friend.
Ken Holmes.
Ken Holmes. And we sit on the board for the motorcycle rider awareness, excuse me, rider awareness rally. And what that is, is to bring unity and awareness to motorcycle riders. We want to make sure that we work together with motor vehicle users and to, you know, just to make, make sure everybody knows that we're here as a community, and we all need to work together to prevent these accidents that have been happening, and as well as to, to educate motorcyclists on their riding. So this is something that we have been very passionate about. It's the second annual anniversary of us doing this, so we're happy about that. The mayor's been very gracious, the city's been very gracious to, to help us with this, and so it's a community event. It'll be going on, on Saturday, May 18th, and Sunday, May 19th, from 10 PM, oh, excuse me, 10 AM to 9 PM on Saturday, and 10 AM to 3 PM on Sunday, at Floyd Gwynn Park. So please come out, bring the family. We're gonna have, we're gonna have games out there. We're gonna have jumpers. We're gonna have food. The, we're gonna have the fire department coming out. I believe OPD is also coming out, so we're gonna have a lot of things. We got a car show come out there. We have K-Bad, we have B-93. We have a lot of things, so it's just gonna be a great fun event, so please come out, join us, and let's continue to work together as a community. And a whole bunch of motorcycles on top of that, so, thank you.
The City of Odessa proclamation, whereas motorcycles are increasingly popular means of transportation for community entering and recreational use on all roads, our local roads, and whereas motorcycle is virtually unprotected, therefore more prone to injury or death in a crash than other vehicle drivers. Whereas the critical element in reducing injury and fatalities, motorcycle is education about motorcycle safety. And whereas the responsibility of all who put themselves behind the wheel to become aware of motorcycle is regarding them with the same respect as any other vehicle traveling the highways of this country. And it is the responsibility of the riders and motorists alike to obey all traffic laws, safety rules, and whereas imperative that our community become aware of the inherent danger involved in operating a motorcycle and for riders and motorists to give each other a mutual respect they deserve. Now therefore, I Javier Hoven, by the virtue of authority vested in me, as the mayor of the city of friendly motorcycle city of Odessa, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2024 is motorcycle safety awareness. Let's give them a round of applause. Thank you for being here. And we'll see you on Saturday.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
This one's a surprise. City of Odessa would like to proclaim, before, let me, let, let, let me, let me say this before I go forward. I met this gentleman and met this beautiful couple and family several years ago, and he's a dear friend. I love this family, and they've taught this community and the surrounding areas what it is to be an American. Being an American, American dream, isn't just American. It is, people come from around the world to come to this country, and they're willing to put behind everything that they know to be able to start over again. That was my mother, and so I've learned what patriotism is by this gentleman, and so I'd like to invite them up here and their family, if you can please join me, come up. And then I'm gonna, I'm gonna read this proclamation, and I'm gonna let them introduce themselves. The City of Odessa would like to proclaim, where Aleil and J.C. Rosa formed Nehemiah 220 Ministries on January 8th, 2018, and whereas Nehemiah 220 Ministries has been educating, teaching, and inspiring American citizens and immigrants in rebuilding the Judeo-Christian foundations and legacies of America. And whereas Aleil has been organizing and coordinating the yearly public reading of the Texas Declaration of Independence, the U.S. Declaration of Independence, the United States Constitution, and the Mayflower Compact. And whereas Aleil has served the citizens of not only Odessa, Texas, but Midland, Texas, Andrews, Texas, San Angelo, Texas, Dallas, Texas, and El Paso. So therefore, I Javier Hoven, by the virtue of authority vested in me, as a grateful mayor of the city of Odessa, Texas, do hereby proclaim May 14, 2024, as Aleil Rosa Day. So throughout this wonderful city and the Permian Basin, I urge all citizens to join together to recognizing this wonderful couple, this wonderful family, for their, for their patriotism, pride, devotion, dedication in teaching us and others the history on American historical documents. Let's give them a round of applause.
I believe that the place we are at right now is just the same place of so many immigrants that came to this country in almost 250 years. All we have in our hearts is gratefulness. Pastor Bob Fu is here, out of China. He knows exactly the same journey of being, we've been through. We appreciate you. We appreciate the way you embraced us as a family eight years ago, and we, we hope we can be able to do the same with other immigrants, even the ones that are already here, and inspire and motivate you to see how beautiful this country is. I just saw, everything that I saw here in this past 20, 25 minutes is what we teach in the school, in the Nehemiah School of Government. I don't know how many of you agree with me that there is a sense of hopelessness in terms of the nation. When you, you look at America, you, you try your best to see where's hope, where is hope, right? Here is, what just happened here, 3,006? 365,000 hours of volunteers by those young men and women, that's America. This is what makes this country great. This is what makes this country the greatest country in human history. So Javier, thank you so much. We're grateful.
I gotta be careful, 'cause I always knock everything down. Council, before, before we move forward, I'd like to have a motion and a second to suspend the rules, so we can move some other people in and out. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Councilmember Heaney. All in favor and in the kicking by saying aye. All opposed and in kicking, same sign. Motion passes. We are now moving on real quick. Citizen comments on non-agenda items. Any member of the public may address the city council regarding any of the agenda items before or during the consideration of said item. We do have three people that want to be able to speak on non-agenda items. I will remind the city council that we cannot respond directly to anyone or anything that's not on the agenda. Coming forward, all you have to do is just present your first and last name and only that, not your address. First one. First one, Tim. I will remind you to introduce yourself and you have three minutes.
All right. I kinda wanted to talk about the, the issues that happened this weekend, especially with the water, and I wanted to give a, give an attaboy. First of all, I wanted to give an attaboy to our city crews that got us up and running, took care of the problem. And it was a heck of a lot less painless, painful, or heck of a lot less painful this time than it was the first time. And the leadership response that came from our city, from city leaders that were there, to especially our city manager, was a marked difference from what it was the first time as well. In my hand, I'm holding a picture on my iPad of a gentleman that is, shows the definition of a true servant leader. And what that is, is that is Mr. Beckmeyer right there, that I wanted to point out. Didn't hesitate whenever everything went down. He was on site with all his crews too. He was in his work boots. And he was a servant leader. I'll tell you what, I'm sure proud of that leadership in our city. And thank you so much, Mr. Beckmeyer, for what you do. Thank you for loving the city. Thank you for loving all of us. I thank you for getting down and dirty with everybody. That's, that's, that is the definition of a leader. I'm, I'm very, very proud to have you as the leader of our city. Thank you so much.
Catherine? Just your full name, just for the record.
Yeah, my name's Catherine Drinkwin.
Thank you.
And I've lived here for about 12 years. And as was just discussed, well, first of all, I want to thank everybody in the city for what they did and for what they continue to do for us. I know that there were a lot of sacrifices made. But there are also sacrifices made by the public also. And so I, my biggest concern is this continues to be a problem. And it is reported, even in the Texas Tribune, that it will continue to be a problem. And not just our water, but even our roads, our infrastructures, it is failing. And so the reason that I felt like addressing the council today was because I'm really hoping that you can hear the appreciation that I have. But also that something is taken care of, that something is done, that our 70-year-old water system is repaired. Because going without water for days and days with animals and with children and yards and the water that came out of my bathtub on Saturday looked like complete sewage. And I am still having to close my bathrooms in my home even today because it still smells like pond water. I can't trust that I can wash my dishes in that, or I can bathe my children in that, or that they're going to be able to consume it. Like if I put my five-year-old in the bathtub and he accidentally swallows a mouthful of that, then that's detrimental. And I just wanted to address the fact that even though I am extremely thankful for all the sacrifices everybody else has made, the public is sacrificing too. And I am really hopeful that a solution, a long-term solution, is figured out because it's, I'm, they're reporting that this is probably gonna happen the rest of the summer. And I'm thankful for everybody that's done everything that they've done, but I really feel like we could do more. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Jonathan?
I'm Jonathan Nguyen. I've lived here my entire life. I am a proud Odessaan. I've worked for the city of Odessa myself in the street division and the traffic engineering department. I wanted to speak on the issues with the solid waste issue we have of their, the dumpsters being dumped once a week. As a citizen, I understand we don't have the supplies. Like I said, I worked in the street division, so I worked right next to the vehicle maintenance department. I've seen all the vehicles, all the police cars coming in and out, all the solid waste trucks, all the dump trucks. I've seen it. I wanted to propose a solution to that issue. Prior to us losing so many solid waste trucks, we got dumped twice a week, four houses to one dumpster. We have cut that down to four houses to one dumpster being dumped once a week. My solution is adding an additional dumpster right next to the main dumpster, so now it's two houses to a dumpster. To where if it gets dumped once a week, it's not that big of an issue. Where the trash is overflowing into the alleys and innocent citizens are being fined because there's trash from the dumpster. Because y'all may not know it, but they don't find all four houses. They find the house that the dumpster is directly behind. Even if that family has been on vacation for three months and hasn't been in town, that house gets fined. And I know every member of the city council works hard. And that's why I wanted to bring it up, because y'all are the ones who can make decisions to help the citizens of Odessa. And instead of seeing on Facebook, all the citizens complaining on Facebook, I was like, well, nothing can get changed unless someone speaks and addresses to the city council. And I think that would be not the best solution, but it is a better solution than being dumped once a week. Because not too long ago, we went two weeks without it being dumped because somebody had put small cinder blocks in the dumpster. So instead of just dumping it, they had to come and replace the entire dumpster. And so we went two weeks with trash overflowing and we were being fined and threatened to have a lien put on our house by code enforcement because people move in and out of these houses all over town. And a new family just moved in right behind us. They're getting new furniture, so they're getting old boxes and these dumpsters, dumpsters aren't very big unless you work or have a restaurant where you have those 12 feet tall dumpsters. I know I'm exaggerating, but your normal resident household dumpster, it's not very big. It barely can support four households. And multiple households don't actually abide by the living quarterments. Most of these houses were built in the 1940s and 50s where one family was no more than four people.
Three minutes are up.
Just wrap it up. Okay, thank you. Ryan?
Mayor Hoven and members of the council, my name is Ryan Norton and I'm the store manager for Southern Tire Mart in Odessa, Texas. My comments today are based on the facts that we know and those that we have learned from records produced by the city. We know through the city's past conduct and practices and through communications produced to us by the city that the city knows its obligations under Texas municipal procurement laws. From 2020 until June 2023, we provided tire replacement and repair to the city under a public contract. Over that time, we worked with the city as a good partner and vendor. In 2023, the city hired Chris Adams as its new director of equipment services and issued a new request for bid for tire replacement and repair. We were the only bidder. The city rejected our bid and stopped buying tires from us. At the city council meeting, Mr. Adams said that Southern Tire Mart had overcharged the city and double-billed the city over $180,000. Those statements were not true. We have provided the city and Mr. Jones our records and supporting documentation showing that those statements were not true. Whether recklessly made or intentionally made by Mr. Adams, they should have been retracted and still should be retracted and apology publicly made to us. Tires are required to be purchased by the city per se to public bid in accordance with Texas law. Since June 2023, the city has been purchasing tires from Forest Brothers Tire and Alignment without a contract. At the end of 2023, the city sent a request for bid proposals for the sale of automotive tires to seven vendors. Three vendors responded, and we were again the low bidder. Over $120,000 less than the bid submitted by Forest Brothers, who was the high bidder. Rather than award the contract to us as the low bidder, the city rejected all bids. However, the city continues to purchase tires from Forest Brothers without a contract. We have analyzed invoices from Forest Brothers to, to the city for tire sales from July 2023 through the middle of January 2024. And compared the prices to what the city should have been paying for the same or similar tires based on government pricing, such as Texas buyboard pricing. That analysis shows that the city has approximately paid $50,000 more than it should have for tires during the six-month time period. We have offered to meet with Mayor Hoven and Mr. Jones on multiple occasions. All such requests have been declined. We're again offering to meet with any of you, and we will be happy to share our analysis at the meeting. We are hopeful that the city this time will accept our offer to meet and that the city will immediately begin complying with Texas law regarding its purchases of tires. If it does not, it could be forced to do so. Thank you for your time.
Council, will you overlook the consent agenda? And I will, oh, yeah, I want to do the continued, then I'm gonna do item seven. Look over the consent agenda. And then I will accept a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
I have a motion.
Items one through eight.
To approve. Do I have a second? Second by council member, all in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposing and indicating same sign. Motion passing and answered. I'm gonna move on to. We, 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 hold on, Jen. So, yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't know it was on the consent agenda. I'm sorry that. Council member Thompson pointed out item seven. Yes, yes. But we already passed the consent agenda. And it was on the consent agenda.
That was something that was already purchased and it doesn't really involve the other vehicles?
So it has nothing to do with what we saw in the work session?
I don't believe.
It's, it's not the same vehicle.
Well, it was on, it was on that list. That's the only reason I made the question.
Okay, okay, okay. So we're good.
Yeah, we're good. We're good.
I want to move on to the regular, on the regular agenda, move on to item 12. We have some visitors here that we'd like to be able to get out. Consider the sister city agreement between the municipalities of Ojinaga, the state of Chihuahua, and the United States, of the United Mexican states, and the city of Odessa, of the state of Texas, and the United States of America. Do you have our visitors here? Are they still outside? Did they leave? Okay. Want to introduce you to Mr. Andres Ramos, Vicero Olivas. And there are visiting from us from Ojinaga, Mexico. About three years ago, there was a request for us to meet to visit Ojinaga. And so this was during the pandemic, and I said that we were gonna get this West Texas boy out of Ector County at that time. That was in '20, then '21. And so there's been some negotiation going back and forth since then about a sister city. I know that the city has entered into sister cities in the past. And I was very reluctant because I asked for the documentation. I could not get any, anything solidified that basically told me why we needed to do this and what was the purpose of this. And so I proceeded very cautiously moving forward. As we wind up continuing to visitations throughout the years, we came to an agreement, we have a lot of citizens in our community. 75% of our population is Latino. A big, large population out of this state and particularly preceded in Ojinaga reside in Odessa, Texas, in our incorporated and unincorporated areas. We have a lot of citizens that travel back and forth. We have families here and there. And so it is truly a sister city. We want to be able to partner. This is also a community of 18,000. And it is growing, but it has a lot of demands. What we have in common within the city of Odessa, we, our hospitals and RFR, OFR, are, everything that the city does, it services inside the city, but also OFR does outside the incorporated city. Once again, working with a lot of these citizens from Ojinaga. And, and we have a big responsibility. This, this city and these city officials also wind up having that type of responsibility for their area. And they do it with very limited resources. So they came and asked if there's anything that the city of Odessa could do to be able to help. And we're, we're fortunate. We're a very wealthy community, and we have a lot of means. And there's a lot of communities in, in our service area and beyond that do not. So I had asked staff to look and they were able to identify items that we have already been, that are out of service, that usually go to auction. A lot of times, we don't get a lot of, when we go to auction, the stuff is old. We're not using it. We don't get a lot of return in investment on it. And we felt that this was probably a better way to help our neighbors, to be able to utilize what we have. Instructed, you know, our deputy city manager to be able to task themselves with this, with this. And so I want to be able to present this to, to the council to continue to develop and foster relationship within these two cities. We're integral, we are interconnected. Just today, one of our, one of our constituents actually knew that they were coming in and asked me to reach out to them because they have family and they have them in a, in a nursing home. And they send a lot of subsistence back to Mexico for their care of their one relative, their only relative in, in Mexico. And so they can't be there oftentimes. And so they were telling me about the living conditions and they said they want help. And so we get a lot of this all the time. And so this is why we proceeded to be able to reach out and to be able to speak to our neighbors to the west of us. And so I think the packet, if you go in there, it's under the regular item on item 12. If the council have actually looked at that. And then that would proceed to resolution for item 13. So this is a non-binding, I mean, there is no commitments, there are no monetary commitments. This is a some. No, I know that. If you heard me, I basically said this will proceed 13, so I'm still on item 12. And so, and so I was, I was basically explaining, this is more of a symbolic gesture. We have, we have visitors and officials. There are, election laws are different in, in Mexico. It is in here. We, we still represent our city officially as CEO and representatives of the, of the, of the council through our terms even during election, but it's different in Mexico. So we are basically doing a lot of housekeeping ourselves. And then as we proceed forward, then they will then in turn, I'll travel over there and then in turn do what we're doing here, there at a later, later this, this spring or summer. So if you have any questions, discussion? Motion to, to move forward on item 12 for a sister city agreement. Quieren hacer, dijeron algo? Quieren hablar? Señor Ramos? Que venir para acá? Can you interpret?
He just wants to thank for all your help and to become these sister cities since we're border and right next to each other. Thank you so much for everything that you're helping.
Mayor, how long did you say that we've been in this agreement, this partnership? Well, there was a previous partnership and sister agreement that was proceeded through the Mexican initiative. I have been briefed on this for countless of years, trying to understand it. Pulled the financials on it and yet to ever figure out if anything was accomplished. Money was spent, but I, I, I just don't understand it. So this is not that same agreement. This is not a Mexican initiative. This is not something from the past. City of Odessa has always entered into some type of sister agreement. We were asked and also solicited to enter a sister agreement with Odessa-Ukraine. And so they definitely did not want to do that. We did speak to several high-ranking officials. It was put together by Congressman Fluger, but never felt comfortable enough to be able to do that. They asked for a laundry list of. They asked for a laundry list of donations for us to facilitate through private contractors. I felt that the federal government was providing enough of our tax dollars that we didn't need to sacrifice more from the local. And so it never pursued that agreement. This one has been about three years that I've been discussing. I think we made progress within the last month. It's taken this long to vet. These things have to be, we have to be very careful. One thing, one stipulation that I did put, that we would not donate anything from our police department. No vest, anything that we take out of circulation for our police department, we will not do. That's the one stipulation, that any type of safety equipment that had to do with police, police enforcement, law enforcement, whether it's body armor, things of that nature, we would not do. The reason is that we wanted to be able to be precaution because in the end user, we didn't want it to fall into the wrong hands. And they completely understood and they agreed. And so basically this is stuff like laptops, vehicles that have been wrecked, machinery that's completely out of service. They can use it, they can use it as for parts and things of that nature. And actually, the government, the local municipality, this is how they depend on being able to outfit equipment and things of that nature. They depend on the state and the, and the federal government to be able to resupply them, but oftentimes it's centralized. So this is, we have several business people and they've already left, but several business people that are from, that are here, that have service companies, trucking companies, everything, they too facilitate a lot of work and donation and things of that nature from, from companies. And so I've been speaking with them and it's, and honestly, it's taken about this long for, for us to come to this agreement.
Thank you. Where do we stay legally as far as?
We can do this. We've already vetted it and everything. We can donate surplus, this will be surplus property that we will get to at number 13 in just a little bit with Marissa comes up. It's actually property that we, we may donate it to some other community here in Texas or somewhere else, but the only difference is we're giving it to Okinawa.
Okay.
And so we're good to go. And, and mayor, if I may add, I don't, I don't think we've ever donated anything to Okinawa before OJ. I don't think we've ever donated anything. And so this was something that was new and something that, frankly, that probably needs to be done to help, you know, to help assist because like the mayor was saying, they, they don't have, you know, federal government like we do that gives us money just to be giving it, printing it and giving it to us.
Limited in property tax, they don't have sales tax, things of that nature. So a lot of times they have to depend on donations.
Yeah.
And, and so they reach out to this community. This was a fit. We have a lot of residents from Ojinaga that live here, reside here, and it goes way beyond, you know, my life. And so, and, and item 12 is separate from item 13. 13 is a, is a standard old item. So agreeing to one doesn't automatically trigger the.
Yes, but Mr. Vasquez answered your question. Yes, sir, we're good. It's been checked out, it's been vetted, we've gone through it, we can do it.
After all that explanation to me, I will certainly entertain making a motion. I have a motion for item 12 as presented.
Be, before a second, I think it'd be appropriate just to have, have the delegates from Ojinaga to come up and at least introduce themselves?
Pueden introducir, pues, señor Ramos, puedes introducir a todos que están aquí. Presentalos.
Mi nombre es Andres Ramos de Anda, de Ojinaga.
Yo soy el doctor Umar Lara, de Ojinaga.
Puede introducir, consiguen, se quiere conocer, se pueden introducirlos?
Andres Ramos de Anda, de Ojinaga, Chihuahua. A la orden.
Umar Lara, de Ojinaga, Chihuahua.
Mucho gusto y bienvenidos.
Gracias.
Permis. Counsel, any other discussion?
This corrects curiosity again. Looking, look, there's some restaurants that look really good down there. But is it, is it one of the main trades furniture making?
I'm sorry?
Furniture making?
I don't know. I don't know.
¿Tienen mueblerías? Crean muebles, ¿verdad? Lo que ustedes.
Sí, sí.
No hacen muebles allí en Ojinaga.
So, we got?
Hay dos mueblerías que os fabrican, pero en otra parte.
Y hay otra.
Sí. Yes.
Yes, there's two.
There's two. So, counsel, any further discussion? We have a motion. I have a second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed indicating the same sign. Motion passes unanimously. We're going to move on to item 13, consider approving donation of city-owned surplus property to the municipality of Ojinaga, Chihuahua, Mexico. Mr. Rodriguez?
Hello, good evening. The item I have is to consider approving donation of city-owned surplus property to the municipality of Ojinaga, Chihuahua, Mexico. Sections 1-8-61 and 1-8-62 of the code of the city of Odessa authorize the city to dispose of surplus property in a manner that will provide the greatest economic gain to the city. The surplus property will no longer be used and it is considered uneconomic to maintain. The donation of the surplus property will serve the public purpose to promote general welfare by providing public services to the citizens of Ojinaga, Chihuahua, Mexico. Thank you.
Counsel, do we have any questions for Ms. Rodriguez? Now I entertain a motion for approval on item 13 as presented.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilmember Haney. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Swannar. All in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed indicating by the same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. This right here, yeah. I think we had one fifty years ago.
Did we?
Yeah. Scott Tany tells me it's just a truck that they proved two thousand and a hundred. And there's an arm like that. Chips off the cap, work that out, all the way to the back. I've never seen one like this. He's got a little truck. So we're going to go back to item nine. Consider the purchase of side-loading metal refuse containers with half-lit kits and metal panels. Mr. Rodriguez. It's not Mr. Rodriguez.
Yeah, Jacob.
It's Jacob. Better looking guy.
I wouldn't say that. Maybe a little bit more hair.
I thought he was going to claim it.
All right, good evening, mayor, council. I'm asking the council to consider the purchase of 248 three-yard metal dumpsters and 100 panels for lids. Total cost is $183,046 and this purchase is budgeted under the solid waste line item account. Not sure if this price is because we're getting so many in bulk, but it's actually a pretty reasonable price at $617. I mean, we're usually seeing closer to 800, so it's not bad.
There you go. So we're going to be, so we're going to be seeing a lot of new containers around here?
Oh, yeah, yes, sir.
What do we do with the old ones?
Refurbish. The ones that are beyond repair, they'll get sent to commercial metals and then that money will get put back into it.
Counsel, any questions? Entertaining motion for item nine is presented.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilmember Matha, second by Councilmember Thompson, all in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed indicating the same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Item 10, consider write-off of delinquent industrial district accounts. Mr. Jones?
Mayor, council, this is, of course, the industrial district accounts and of course, as you know, we, we collect these fees, they're outside, they're in our ETJ fees in lieu of taxes. And so for 2016, 17, and 18, we have a total of $6,764.32 that we just simply need to write off.
Okay.
I just need a motion to write it off.
Yeah, I think that will cost us more legal fees trying to go after it.
It will.
I think it's one of them, it's really one company, it's about 4,000, 5,000 around, maybe it's our hundreds.
Hinkle Corp. is at 5,400 and it would cost more to go chasing after it.
Counsel, any questions, discussion? I've now entertained a motion to accept item 10 as presented.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilmember Matha, I have a second.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Swannar, all in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item 11, consider formation of utility valve crew. Mr. Beckmeyer?
Okay, to begin with, and I wish, I want to offer my most sincere apologies to the public for what you all have had to endure this weekend. You should never have to go through that. And I want to commend Mr. Niles and his crews for the hard work that they put in. I appreciate Mr. Harry's words, but I was just support, tried to not get in the way and help if I could. I don't think that this really requires a lot of explanation, it's just really not needed. I think that this item is fairly self-explanatory. However, as stated, we do have an aging infrastructure. We're going to have breaks, we're going to have leaks, we're going to have accidents like we had last night. Last night, we had a pretty major outage, affected five to 10,000 people and it was on brand-new infrastructure. It got drilled through by a contractor. They didn't mean to do it, it was an accident. We're going to have things like that. It's normal, an aging infrastructure in a city our age is, is normal. Things are going to happen, but what's not acceptable is the response times due to the decades of neglect, some of the most vital elements of our infrastructure normally, namely our valves. It's just unacceptable to leave our citizens without water for what in the past has been days. It's unacceptable to hamstring our crews like Mr. Niles' crews, our contractors, and all because we can't isolate a problem and take care of it in a timely manner. We don't talk about neglect to point blame, not at past administrations, I really don't care. Neglect is neglect, but as a direction of what we need to do to move forward. It's not, hey, this person didn't do this or that person didn't do that. It's just a fact, it hasn't been taken care of. So what I'd like to do is establish basically a two-man crew, and I would use Mr. Niles' direction on that, that would be primarily responsible for valves. And I've done a lot of work outside, this type of work here. Valves, they're everything whenever you start dealing with water. I know every time I'd be working on a system, if I had a chance, I'd put a valve in because I want to isolate everything I can, I want to stop the water flow. But primarily, they'd be responsible for exercising the valves, turning them on and off, making sure they still work, identifying problems and coordinating repairs and replacements, along with other related activities. The other night we lost, or with the leak on Saturday, we lost an estimated over that week, 28,000, 28 million, sorry, it sounded good first, 28 million gallons of water. That's not acceptable either.
Yep.
Just a 118-inch line break. If we can identify the problems and schedule a replacement, if people can know that we're going to be shutting something down and they can prepare, if it's on a scheduled date and they can be ready and it can turn what would be a disaster into an inconvenience. Even if you schedule, it's no fun to be without water. But if you don't know and you're sitting there and you're like, what do we do now? That's a disaster. So, counsel, I only ask for your consideration and we'll answer any questions.
Mr. Beckmeyer, what are we talking about as far as money? Do we know that yet? Are we just asking for the creation?
For the creation, it's, when you look at other, at the departments as a whole, it's pretty minimal.
Okay. How are you going to categorize it? Do you have to have a line on how you're going to categorize the worker and things of that nature?
Essential labor. I'm not sure. I'm going to, I'll, I'll get with HR.
I would, I would agree with that. I like that, yeah. Mr. Niles? Yes, sir.
I will, I will work with Mr. Niles and with HR to come up with appropriate, what I really see is this is probably an entry-level, entry-level position, maybe a position for somebody that is already retired and would like to come back to work. Again, this is Mr. Niles' crew, this isn't my crew. I'll, I will make my suggestions, but ultimately, it's Kevin and, and his department. He's done an amazing job throughout this and again, I truly appreciate it.
Very impressive with the guys. Yes, sir.
So I just want to kind of piggyback on what Mr. Beckmeyer said. Obviously, we do need a crew to come out and exercise these valves. However, based off the situation that happened the other night, I've already been in contact with multiple different companies to help us figure out how we can isolate our valves better and how we can definitely make sure that that 18-inch line that follows 42nd Street can be isolated if something like this is to happen again. My recommendation, again with Mr. Beckmeyer, you know, having a valve crew, I can see that as a feasibility in future years, but I think my recommendation coming to council and Mr. Beckmeyer will be to contract with an outside company that can come in and exercise all our valves through the entire city and do every valve and figure out exactly what's working, what's not working, what needs to be repaired, what needs to be replaced. Yes, it's an upfront cost and it's a substantial upfront cost, but once we know that and once we have that information and we can put that into our MGO software that we're just now getting, then we'll have a better capability of having a crew come back behind them and being, giving us the opportunity to build up the department. Right now, staffing is a big issue. It is hard to find qualified applicants to come in and do these entry-level jobs. So it's, the department is spread thin as it is. And again, I appreciate Mr. Beckmeyer's thought process on this, but I do think that we need to move forward with trying to get a company to come in, an outside contract to come in and go through the entire city from one end to the other, check each and every valve, exercise it, determine if it's broken, if it needs to be repaired or replaced, and then we can come up with a game plan for there. But we do need to have a valve crew. That is, that is an obvious thing.
Mr. Beckmeyer, how many valves would you estimate we have for both valves, direct gate and bypass?
I couldn't even estimate. Seven, it's in the thousands, yeah.
We're in the thousands.
I'd say tens of thousands.
And as far as the mechanic?
We have 700 miles with the pipe.
As far as the mechanics of how we get into this, I don't have an opinion.
My thing of it is, is I would like a professional company, folks that do this for a living, to come in so we're not breaking valves and causing more problems than what we had before. So these folks come in, they're professionals, they know how to torque on these, they know how to make sure that they're exercising these valves to where we're not causing damage. And we have no idea, are they broke open, are they broke closed? And just like the situation that we encountered the other night, we had a valve that was busted, but it was busted closed and we didn't know that until we cut on the other side of the pipe. Once we cut on the other side of the valve, then we realized it was broke closed.
Well, and I think that's a point that needs to be pointed out too, and you know, the, the story that was written by the Texas Tribune this past week and saying that, you know, to expect more, this is, you know, that this is going to keep happening, is, it is going to have to keep happening because if you want to replace these valves, what is going to have to be shut off. I mean, there's, there's just no way around it. However, I think what Mr. Beckmeyer was saying is true, that we can mitigate that and make it less of a, of a nuisance to the citizens out there. But as far as, you know, we would love to promise and say that we're never going to have any shut offs like, like we have, but in reality, it's just, there's just no way. You know, we, you just got them saying we have thousands of valves out there, we have over 700 miles of pipe. We've never had a way to track how old these valves are until we had, now we have this new software that we can finally get that done and we can. new software that we can finally get that done, and we can say, okay, this valve has been in service for 15 years, this one's been in service for 25-plus years. That's instrumental in helping us get this problem solved, so the right steps are being taken, and there are going to be some inconveniences still in the future for our citizens, but we're hoping to mitigate that and to make it less of a nuisance for them, because we, we lived through it also. We, we got our, I didn't have water, and we're all victims of it, and we all don't like it. But, I mean, this is just the first step in solving that problem, and, you know, I think that it's going to be, it's going to be a plus for all the citizens out there, and, you know, we're definitely tackling this, this, this issue of our aging infrastructure. It's going to take time, it's not, it's not something that can be done overnight, not something that can be done in a year. You know, it's going to take some time to track all these valves down, track all this, all the problems, and then address it. So, you know, we're working hard. Mr. Niles, you're, you and your staff are working exceptionally hard and behind it, and we appreciate that, and we just ask that the patient, that the citizens be patient with us, because we are working on this diligently, and we are going to tackle this and make sure that it gets handled in an effective way.
Mr. Jones, have a question. To me, this rises to the level of an emergency. Is there an action that the Council, and if the answer's no, can take to allow me to enter into negotiations and try to help Kevin find a company to do this?
I would say that we have a public calamity of possibility on our hands.
Yeah, we do. We all recognize it.
I think it is, so I mean, I feel comfortable if Council so chose to tell you to enter into negotiations with, with maybe finding a valve company or somebody, then I think it would be good.
Okay.
I'm comfortable with that.
So, John, can you tell me how much, I can't remember, I know it's not, doesn't seem like a big number, but the cost of losing 28 million gallons of water?
I cannot, I didn't get.
It's $12,000.
How much?
$12,000.
That's all?
That's all, well, what we pay, that's our cost.
Our cost.
That's our cost.
Our cost. I knew you'd know that. But, but, but when you equate that with restaurants not being able to open because of the bull notice, the mitigated loss that's unrecoupable, it's in the millions.
And, even, that's all money, we can make that back.
Yeah.
When we have a personal loss?
Yeah.
That's, that's not quantifiable, and it's, again, in my mind, it's not acceptable. And I saw guys going down there and, and waste deep water trying to get pipes out of the ground, because we can turn the water off right there. 19 valves open, 12 to 19.
Yeah, we have, we had a total of 19 broken valves that we could not isolate on that 18-inch line. Keep in mind, that was, it's a main transmission line that was broken. Most of the time when we have a break on our feeder lines, which are six-inch, eight-inch lines, we can usually isolate those breaks and still keep people in service. The reason why we couldn't keep people in service is we had a main transmission line that was impacted, and unfortunately, we had to make a decision to turn off the water treatment plant at that point in time, because if not, we were going to cause detrimental harm to the plant. It was too, too low of pressure.
Kevin and, and his crew kept as many people in water as long as they could, until the pressure just got too low, then they had to shut it down. He also, working with our engineering, were, did something that, when you say it, you say, well, that makes sense, but it didn't always make sense, obviously. They shut the towers off first, so that they were full. When we came back on, you had automatic water. So, this.
That's the difference from last time, last time they were emptied.
This was, this was a disaster with several successes.
Yeah.
I know that sounds kind of goofy, but it really was. But it's, again, we have, we have to move forward. You know, I've seen a lot of comments, I've had people tell me, well, it's been said in the past, we're going to fix this and all that. Okay, I don't care. We're going, we have to address it.
Yeah.
No more kicking the bucket down the road, guys.
Nope.
No more.
I think everybody's here in agreement, so Counsel, we have no other discussion on this item. I will move and ask for a approval of item 11 to allow Mr. Beckmeyer, Management Legal, Mr. Kevin Niles, to negotiate with a contractor to create a utility crew, a utility valve crew. If any discussion, entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilmember Swann, second by Councilmember Haney. All those in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposing indicating same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Counsel. We're going to move on to item 14. Consider authorizing Odessa Police Department to apply and accept appropriate grant funds of $150,000 from the fiscal year 24 Law Enforcement, Mental Health, and Wellness. Chief?
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. This is simply a request to allow us to apply for, and have given funds to accept those funds, grant funds in the amount of up to $150,000 from the fiscal year 24 Law Enforcement, Mental Health, and Wellness Act Implementation Project. This is a grant from the Bureau of Justice Assistance. It, there is no cash match, so the monies that we ask for and we're granted, there's nothing that the city has to match. We'll use these funds for three different purposes. Number one, there's a program called Blue Chip in the Dallas-Fort Worth that is for first responders for law enforcement. Basically, it's a casino chip. You hand that to an officer, they're able to turn that in, and then to get mental health services through telemedicine. So we want to be able to provide, this is a two-year grant, we want to be able to provide two chips to each officer each year. We want one chip to be a self-check. Obviously, I don't get to hear about those self-checks, it's that officer and that therapist. The idea is to make sure that the officer stays well and grounded, and able to serve the community. The, the second prong is financial health. We'll bring in folks that will, that teach financial health to our police officers, because that's another prong, to our officers being able to serve their community well. And then, the third prong is bringing in speakers from the community to talk to our new officers before they enter the academy, so they get a better understanding of what to expect from our community as they go out and serve our community.
Counsel, any discussion? Not entertain a motion to accept item 14 as presented?
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilmember Thompson, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Motta, all in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed indicating same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Counsel.
Item 15, consider textile agreement temporary street closure. This is agreement to allow the city to close textile right away for the fire car, Fandango. Joseph?
Good morning, Mayor, Counsel. Evening, Mayor, Counsel.
Good evening.
Sorry.
Any longer, we're going to be here in the morning.
Sorry. This is an agreement with the textile for us to close Grand Street from First to Sixth Street, from 6:00 AM to 12:00 AM on July 4th, for the Fandango.
All right, we're getting back to the 4th of July.
Yes, sir.
Not in June.
Yes, sir.
All right. Counsel, any discussion? This is per self-explanatory, consider a motion to accept item 15 as presented?
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilmember Swann, second by Councilmember Haney.
Conal.
All those in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposing indicating same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
That was easy.
Yes.
Item 16, consider awarding contract bid for Gallagher Benefit Services, serve the benefit of Consultive Pharmacy and Health and Welfare for Employee Benefits. How are you doing?
Hi. Good evening, Mayor, Counsel, City Manager, Dan and Norma. Thank you all for letting me come before you again. We, I came before you in March, asking if we could go out for bid for benefits consultant so that we could overhaul our benefits. We've gotten through the RFQ process and have made a decision, but before I tell you who that is, I wanted to make sure you had all of the information. So, we sent the RFQ out in early April, and got the results back in the end of April. Immediately, we met with all six proposers, so we, we allowed all of them to come in and talk to us, walk us through their proposal. There was, there's a benefits work, work group that we actually built the RFQ, and then we all participated in the review. The six companies that proposed was Hub International, MMA, USI, Gallagher, Risk Strategies, and Vector ES. When the RFQ went out, we also sent a communication to our employees to let them know that we had done that, and to share with them what we would be focused on, and that we wanted them to participate, that we want them to participate once the process begins. The selection process, so as I said, we brought in all of the six vendors, we allowed them a couple hours to come in and talk to us and share their information about their company and what they could possibly do for us, and, and then each member of the committee submitted their, their vote back to purchasing, directly to purchasing for the tabulation, and we select a Gallagher consulting, consulting. So I stand before you, asking for consideration to award the contract bid to Gallagher Consulting to serve as our benefits consultant. They will help us with the pharmacy and all of our other employee benefits as well, including the voluntary plans. To approve the consulting agreement, so they sent two separate agreements, one for pharmacy and one for all the other remaining benefits. The cost of the consulting is $90,000, which is below what we were requesting. For the pharmacy, the cost for them to do the RFP and to review our contract, and to provide us all the analysis for the pharmacy benefits is $60,000. However, we can actually, there's, they have a model in which we can actually build that back through the RFP process and have the actual vendor pay for that, and so we don't necessarily have to pay that $60,000. And then, we'll need for you all to authorize, hopefully to authorize the city manager to execute the documents that we have. Now, I want to share that this is a heavy lift for us, right, and that there, there are going to be some pain points. One is, we have a lot of data. We have been processing our claims for a very long time, so we will have to think about what we will do with that data and how we will continue to maintain it as required by law. So we have some challenges there. One of the reasons that we chose Gallagher is because they have experience working with our claims processing platform, and so we, I just want to make sure that you understand that this is not going to be easy, we may have, you know, disruption, of course, we're experiencing that now with the new pharmacy benefit manager. But I think we're prepared for it, and I think we've made a good selection.
How many years of data?
So we have been processing our own claims since 2004, 2005. So it's a lot of data, and then we also have the clinic data as well. So we have a big challenge around the data, so our approach will be a multi-year approach in terms of this implementation, because there are some more complicated pieces that we have to work on.
Okay. Counsel, discussion? Questions? I guess on Gallagher, you had mentioned, but what was what really impressed you? Were they shined above the other contestants on that?
So we were fortunate in that we got those six, those six proposers, five of them were national or international groups, and we, we honestly felt, from our perspective, any one of those, probably three or four, could actually do the job. But what stood out for Gallagher, for me personally, is that they have experience, they do have experience with GBAS, which is the system platform that we use to process those claims. In addition to that, the team, and, and this is one point that Tony May, the IT Director, is that the team clearly had experience working together, so it wasn't a piecemeal team that came to talk to us. We felt very comfortable that they would be able to work well together and make sure that we would accomplish our goals. We put a lot of pressure on these groups because one of the, one of the more important things is, we want to be able to provide you all with a tentative budget before your actual retreat. And so, we will work with Gallagher immediately to make sure that we're getting those numbers in place and that we have a better understanding, and we hopefully, they can also help us with the budget structure. So, the pharmacy was actually probably really key as well, because we have a lot of issues with regard to the PBM that we currently have in place, and we know that we have to do an extensive review of that entire contract, of that process, before they can even submit it out for a bid, to help us identify the savings that are within the contract. It hasn't even been submitted to legal yet, because there's still needed to be review of the clinical pieces of that contract that we currently have. So I would say that we talked to them about, we talked to every one of the proposers about risk, what we would be possibly facing, and I just think that they had a better sense of where we were trying to go.
Any further discussion? Questions? If not, considering motion to approve item 16 as presented?
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilmember Haney, second by Councilmember Motta. All those in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed indicating same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Griffin. Move on to item 17. Consider approving allocation of funds for impact fee account to Line Q infrastructure project, account of 1.2 million. Mr. Niles?
Good evening, Mayor, Counsel. For your consideration, I would like to move 1.2 million dollars from the impact fee accounts to cover costs associated with the Line Q project, and free up that 1.2 million dollars from the Pioneer account. The 1.2 million dollars of the Pioneer funds can help cover additional unanticipated costs occurred by the department in this year's budget period.
Counsel, discussion?
And Mayor, Counsel, this does qualify, it is a capital improvement.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's, we're good to go.
That's my only question.
Yeah, we're good to go.
No discussion, entertain a motion to approve item 17 as presented?
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilmember Thompson, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Swann, all in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed indicating same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Niles. Item 18, consider appropriating additional 50,000 pay for Synergy Sports, Rad Sports, LLC for the general fund. Mr. Beckmeyer?
Whenever we signed the agreement with Synergy and Rad Sports, it was for a million dollars for them to do all their work, all their design work and all of that, and what we moved into the account and what we got approved to move at that time was 950,000, and this is the other 50,000 that will come from general funds.
Counsel, any discussion? Not, entertain a motion to accept item 18 as presented?
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilmember Motta, I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Haney, all in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposing indicating same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Move on to item 19, is the most critical one on the agenda. Considering many in Article 6-7 tobacco products of the city code of the ordinances, I think this affects one person, if I'm right.
Yeah.
I don't know, I'm just joking. Item 19. Mr. Jones?
Mayor, Counsel, this is basically, we're going to amend Article 6-7 tobacco products where 50 feet outside of the City Hall building, and of course, any municipal buildings, you won't be able to use tobacco products or e-cigarettes, so I'm asking for your motion, this will be the first approval, to approve.
Okay. I just want to ask, how's that going to be monitored and enforced?
Mr. Brinol's going to actually be doing this, and he's going to build like a hut out there, you know, about 100 feet out.
Anybody who's caught wearing a bright fluorescent?
Yeah.
Pink shirt is going to be the one that's going to be tasked to enforce that.
Yes.
But there's nobody here like that.
Is it negotiable for 45 feet?
Oh, I, well, I mean, it is, if y'all want to make a motion here and change it, I mean, we could certainly, you know, do that.
It could just be voted down.
Yeah, I mean, this is y'all's decision. You can vote it up or down, whatever you want to do.
Counsel, discussion? Move approval. We have a motion for approval, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed indicating same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item 20, consider the appointment of salary of $100 for Jay Roxanne Blunt as alternate judge for the city of Odessa Municipal Court for the term of two years, first approval. Mr. Jones?
Mayor, Counsel, this is- Mayor, counsel, this is for Attorney Roxanne Blunt to be appointed as an alternate judge of City of Odessa Municipal Court for a term of two years. Also, this is $100 per hour. This is what Mike Holmes and Steve Steen are paid as well. And so it is $100 per hour. And I don't think she's here tonight. Well, there she is, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Jones, for that clarification.
Yes, it's $100 per, per hour.
Being the budget guy that I am, I was liking it a minute ago.
So, so I need a motion appointing her at $100 per hour, please.
So she'll become a third alternate?
Third, third. And, and we need that because apparently on the weekends, they're quite busy with magistrations and all that.
Yeah, imagine that. I so move.
I have a motion, do I have a second? Second by Councilmember Cornell, all in favor indicating but saying aye. All those opposing indicating same side. Motion passing and answered. We're on miscellaneous, item 21, executive session. It's authorized by the Texas Government Code, Section 551.071-2. Consultation with attorney, the city council may adjourn its executive session to discuss matter in which duty of the attorney of governmental body of Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of state of Texas clearly conflicts with chapter with the city attorney. Kevin Knobs employs the utility department in order to discuss security concerns. We have to do, do them separately?
What I'd like for you to do is do both of them.
Go ahead and read the second one.
And read the second one for B on 21B, I believe it's 21B.
Yes.
And if you do that, then we'll do a motion to go in and just get along the story in and out.
Yeah. 21.
We, we suspended the rules, all right?
Yeah.
Why, why don't we take 22 and just get it out of the way?
We can do that.
If you want to do that, we can do that.
We can do that. Move on to item 22, Board of Appointments, City Secretary Agudar.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and counsel. For the Colorado River Municipal Water District, Mickey Jones and Dan Holman wish to serve again. For the Housing Authority of Odessa, Rita Barrientes. And those are the only two.
Did you not contact Marissa Chera? Get an application?
Yes, it has been received.
You didn't put her on there? Okay.
It will be on the 28th.
Let's do that because the, 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 his chestnut is itching to get off. Because he wants to be able to qualify his properties. He's got to be off 24 months before he can apply. So he has been on me. Is that it?
Yes, sir.
Um, okay, so item B, do we have a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor indicating but saying aye. All those opposing getting same sign. Item D, Housing Authority, Rita Barrientes, have a motion?
So move.
I have a motion by Councilmember Heaney, second by Councilmember Vasquez, all in favor indicating but saying aye. All those opposing getting same sign. Motion passing and answered. Miscellaneous, 21A, executive session is authorized by the Texas Government Code, Section 551.071-2. Consultation with attorney, city council may adjourn to the executive session to discuss a matter in which duty of the attorney of the governmental body of Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the state of Texas clearly conflicts with this chapter. City Attorney Kevin Knobs employs the utility department to discuss security concerns. 21B, executive session authorized by Texas Government Code, Section 551.074, personnel matters. City council may adjourn into executive session to consider personnel matters deliberate employment, deliberate employment, evaluation due to disciplinary complaint of dismissal of public officer or employee. Texas Government Code 551.074. Judge Kidd would like the council to assess and consider increasing salary. I have a motion.
I made.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Heaney, all those in favor indicating but saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposing indicating the same sign. Motion passing and answered. We are in executive session and we will return.
I need a motion in the second to reconvene in general session.
So moved.
I've moved the councilmember hanging, second by councilmember Swan. All those in favor in the game by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed in the game saying aye. We are back in general session. Seeing that we took no action on Mr. Lane has items 21A and 21B and seeing that there is no more business before the city council, have a motion to adjourn by councilmember Swan.
Second.
Second. Vasquez. All in favor in the game by saying aye.